Here, Ms. Cherry.
Here.
Mr. Kilgore.
Here.
Mr. Samuels.
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse.
Here.
Dr. Mason.
Here. Let the record reflect that all board members are present and accounted for. At this time, I'm going to ask our student rep, Michaela, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And if it's okay with the board, once our student who will be joining us gets here, we will come back to our opening, but we'll move along with the rest of the agenda. If that's okay with everyone.
I will now pledge my Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Michaela. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion in reference to the adoption of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Ms. Afanjia that we adopt tonight's agenda as printed. Any discussion? Ms. Bowser, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjia.
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray.
Aye.
Ms. Cherry.
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore.
Aye.
Mr. Samuels.
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse.
Aye.
Dr. Mason.
All right, motion carries. Next up on the agenda, we're going to move right along to recognitions. And I'll turn the mic over to Ms. Kelly Gorel.
Thank you Chair Mason and Vice Chair Banks Gray, members of our school board, Superintendent Smith, and members of our Hampton City Schools family. At this time, I'd ask for Dr. Banks Gray to please proceed to the microphone on the stage to assist with tonight's recognitions. All right. So it's our pleasure to recognize a special group of educators this evening, our National Board Certified Teachers. Through National Board Certification, teachers demonstrate that their teaching meets the profession's standards for accomplished practice through a rigorous, peer-reviewed, and performance-based process, similar to professional certifications in fields such as medicine. In achieving board certification, teachers prove their ability to advance student learning and achievement. National Board Certification is the most respected professional certification available in education and provides numerous benefits to teachers, our students, and our schools. It was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvement in schools nationwide. While teacher licensure systems set the basic requirements to teach in each state, completion of National Board Certification signifies that teachers have voluntarily gone much further. National Board Certified Teachers have developed and demonstrated the advanced knowledge, skills, and practices required of an outstanding educator. This year, we are proud to recognize three of our Hampton City School teachers who have earned their National Board Certification for the very first time. So if you would please join me on the floor beside the podium as I call your name, we have Mr. Patrick McCray, a math teacher at Tarant Middle School. Yes, please. We have Margaret Sosie, an elementary teacher specialist for social studies. And our third newly certified MBCT, yes, that is an acronym, we're very, have lots of acronyms in education, is actually unable to join us this evening, but I'd still like to recognize Krista Sorak, a first grade teacher from Mary S. Peak Elementary School. In addition to the professionals standing before us who are newly certified, we are proud to recognize our staff members who have earned their renewal certification. So please join us up front as I call your name. We've got Mr. Kelly D., our Visual and Performing Arts Curriculum Leader. Charlene Rawls, a reading specialist at Machen Elementary School. And Jessica Townsend, a math interventionist at Forest Elementary School. We have three additional individuals who earned their renewed certification but were unable to join us this evening. However, again, I'd like to still recognize them on camera. So we're going to say congratulations to Courtney Fairies, a special education teacher at Jones Magnet Middle School, Christy Fife, a language arts teacher at Jones Magnet Middle School, and Thomas Worrell, a teacher librarian at Phoebus High School. So let's give all of them a big round of applause. All right, and I'm going to turn the mic over to Dr. Banks Gray.
Awesome. Now, congratulations once again. And would you all, please join me onstage by the microphone, please. Now, before I present each of them with their certificate of recognition, I would like to say that we know the rigorous process to become a National Board Certified Teacher is no simple task. It certainly takes a great deal of time and effort to accomplish. And we thank each of you for pushing yourself professionally to ultimately advance student learning and achievement for our Hampton City Schools students. So without further ado, on behalf of Chair Dr. Mason, the Hampton School Board, and our Superintendent Dr. Smith, please accept these certificates of recognitions for your outstanding accomplishments. So I'm just going to read one because we have several. We want to keep everybody here all night long. So the certificate reads as Certificate of Achievement from the Hampton City School Board. And the first one says, "Congratulations, this certificate is proudly presented to Patrick McCray, National Board Certified Teacher." Let's hear it for him, everyone. And at the next certificate says the same thing, and this goes to Ms. Margaret Sosie. Next certificate is the same wording, and it goes to Mr. Kelly D. Congratulations. Next certificate is Charlene Rawls. And last but not least, Ms. Jessica Townsend. Before you all have a seat, we would like to recognize important guests in our audience tonight who are here supporting you. Would any family members, fellow teachers, or administrators of our National Board Certified Teachers, would you please stand in the audience and please be recognized? Awesome. And would Dr. Kim Richardson, the GOAT, please stand to be recognized? Keep standing, ma'am. We want to make sure we see you. Dr. Richardson is a Hampton City Schools Director of Induction and Development who also oversees the National Board Certified Teacher Program and is a huge support to our teachers. Let's give her another round of applause. And once again, please join me in a round of applause to recognize our special guest and to congratulate our newest board certified teachers as well as our teachers who have earned their recertification. Job well done.
Dr. Banks Gray, you don't have a dance for us or a song?
You know what? We had dinner prior to our West Proxess, but next recognition, I got you.
Congratulations to each and every one of you. And Chair Mason, that actually concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and congratulations to everyone. Any comments from board members? Okay, moving right along. I do believe that I saw, was it Okoya Ottley? Did I say that correctly? Come on down. And I will turn it over to Michaela.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
My apologies. Hello, Okoya. Thank you for joining us this evening. It's a pleasure to have you here. It is to my knowledge that you will be sharing something with us, so you can proceed with that how you would like.
Okay. May this be the day we come together. Mourning we come to men, withered we come to weather, torn we come to tin, battered we come to better. Tethered by this year of yearning, we are learning that though we aren't ready for this, we have been readied by it. We steadily vow that no matter how we are way down, we must always find a way to pay forward. This hope is our door, our portal. Even if we never get back to normal, someday we can venture beyond it to leave the known and take the first steps. So let us return to what was normal, but reach toward what is next.
All righty, thank you so much. That was wonderful.
Thank you.
If we could give her another round of applause. I truly believe that those words were wise beyond your years. I don't know if anyone can agree, but poetry is a great way to share how you're feeling, whether those feelings are positive or negative. And that was really great. And it's wonderful that you are here to represent Tarant and all of your supporters here. If you would like to introduce anyone that's here with you?
My family, my sister, my mother, and my niece.
Stand up for us.
All righty, thank you so much. We do have a small gift for you for joining us.
Can we also get the administrators from Tarant to stand up as well, and those with you from Tarant? Some teachers, and I see your administrators. Yes, yes. And thank you all so much for sharing her with us this evening. It's always special when we have our students that can join us here at our board meetings and share words of encouragement for others that are listening. So thank you all so much. Any other board members want to make any comments?
I just really, I really did enjoy that poem. Do we have the name and the author of that? Perhaps? That was a really inspiring piece. Amanda Orman? Okay.
Okoya.
What was the name of it, sweet? The New Days Are... Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you again. That was awesome.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Banks Gray?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Ms. Okoya, I want to tell you that you have one of the most sweetest voices I've ever heard in my entire life. You sound like an absolute angel, and I appreciate you sharing that beautiful poem with us all. Thank you so much.
She does. And if I could, Mr. Chair, I can tell you're special. And I can tell you're going to be even more special because the first thing you did was come on this stage. So always be on stage. I love it. You love an audience. I love it.
All right, anyone else? Thanks again, Okoya. So moving right along, the next item is the Consent Agenda 3.01, Personnel Report Number 23-04, 3.02, Minutes of the School Board Meeting of February 15, 2023, 3.03, Minutes of the Public Hearing of February 16, 2023, and 3.04, School Board Consent to Receipt of Donations, March 23. What is the will of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by, was it Dr. Woodhouse? Dr. Woodhouse, that we approve tonight's consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Ms. Bowser, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Banks Gray.
Aye.
Ms. Cherry.
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore.
Aye.
Mr. Samuels.
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse.
Aye.
Ms. Afanjia.
Aye.
Dr. Mason.
All right, motion carries. Item number four, Superintendent and Staff Reports. And so now I'll turn it over to Superintendent, our award-winning Superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
Thank you, sir. Let me start by saying, Mr. Chairman and Vice Chair and members of the board, it is my pleasure to recommend to you this evening a proposed budget for the FY 2024 school year that once again focuses on investing in every young person, that once again focuses on investing in the resources that support the core business of teaching and learning, and that once again focuses on investing in the human resources that bring to life and enable us to realize the mission of our school division. And that once again focuses on investing in the infrastructure that is needed to realize our core business of teaching and learning within the context of our mission. As you're aware, we made prudent budget decisions during the FY 2023 budget development process that ultimately put us in a place of strength as we developed the FY 2024 budget. Mr. Chair, thank you, and also to each member of the school board for your participation in the development process during our one-on-one and two-by-two budget meetings that took place. And also, I know that Ms. Branch will acknowledge all of the members of the leadership team and the various departments for their participation as well. At this time, I will turn our presentation for the FY 2024, Superintendent's Recommended Budget, over to Mrs. Brittany Branch, our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Chair and Vice Chair and members of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, school board members, our students, our teachers, the Hampton community, and Dr. Smith. It is my pleasure tonight to present the fiscal year 2023-2024 Recommended Budget for next school year. As Dr. Smith has mentioned, this budget does invest in many priorities to help us to continue to further our strategic plan, especially around our teacher and staff recruitment and retention, and also maximizing every child's learning. So looking at the budget at a glance, overall, the recommended budget includes a 5% compensation increase for teachers and staff, and that is with no increase to employee healthcare premiums for next school year. The recommended budget also includes a 1% bonus and also investing in additional teaching positions to help support our instructional program. We will take a deeper look at these recommendations, but first, I want to start our presentation off by looking at our budget development process. So within Hampton City Schools, we always take a systems approach to everything that we do, and that is no different with the budget. And this is vital because this formal budget process allows us to make sure that we are aligning our resources with our strategic plan. The budget development process, it includes five different phases. It starts with planning, then moves to data collection, then review and presentations, approvals, and then the last phase, which is the actual closeout. During the development of the 2024's budget, some of the highlights include, we released a budget development calendar and also a manual that we provide to each one of our departments and schools because really that provides them with the roadmap of what the process will look like for the school year. We also asked our departments and schools to provide budget requests that included non-payroll and also personnel items as well. In the December timeframe, the governor releases the state budget, and we utilize that as our initial revenue projections. So the recommendation tonight will be based on the governor's budget while we await for the final State General Assembly budget. We also do calculations, excuse me, over our fall enrollment for next school year and also our March 31 average daily membership. Tonight, we are in the review and presentations phase, which is the yellow section of this chart. And then in April, we will present to the city council, and that will be the basis for their scheduled vote in May. And then we will close out by making sure that we have a budget that is ready to go come July 1st. So not only do we look at the budget from the perspective of what the requests are from the departments, but we also survey the school board because we need to know what are those priorities for next school year. So looking at next school year, the school board identified the Academies of Hampton, student achievement, teacher and staff recruitment and retention, also competitive compensation for teachers and staff, and then continuing to make sure that we are continuing our focus on school safety measures, and that would include violence prevention as well. So the strategic plan and the school board's priorities, they all made alive through our funds that we have within Hampton City Schools. So within the school division, we have seven different distinct separate funds. And this chart or pyramid, it helps you to see how each one of those funds are categorized under the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASBIE, and you'll hear me use that acronym throughout the presentation. So under the GASBIE, they have identified that you have funds that are enterprise funds, some that are special revenue funds, and then some that are considered a general fund. So we're going to kick off the recommendation and talk about first, the top of the tier of the pyramid, and looking at our enterprise fund, Fund 95, the Instructional Toolkit. And we just say the toolkit internally, just for short. So looking at Fund 95, the Instructional Resource Toolkit, we are recommending a budget of $311,000 for next school year. Now, the toolkit, this is the business enterprise that the school division began in 2022. And what this has enabled us to do is to sell our curriculum and other Hampton City Schools' resources to other school divisions in Virginia for a fee. Now, because that is a business-type activity, that is why the GASBIE does require us to account for it in a enterprise fund. We have approximately, I believe right now, 10 different customers since we've started this new enterprise, but we are expecting, as you can see, growth within Fund 95. The resources and the revenue that is earned is directly utilized to pay extra earnings for the staff within the school division that are going to the other school divisions that are our customers to provide them with what they need to implement our resources within their school divisions. Moving to the athletics fund, Fund 94. So this really starts our transition as we look at those special revenue funds. So Fund 94, this is the fund that we utilize to account for the operations for our sports program across the division. We are recommending a budget of $784,000, and this will be an increase over our current budget of about $68,000 or almost $69,000 next school year. The revenue within athletics funds, it is derived from things such as ticket sales at our sporting events. And then also, our school operating fund, Fund 50, provides funding to help support athletics across the division. That increase of about $69,000, that is driven by, one, we are expanding our sports program. So for example, at the middle school, we will be transitioning to track in the fall next year. And then we're also going to introduce a junior varsity volleyball program as well. You'll see a corresponding increase in our expenditures because as we expand into other sports, that means the other costs such as officials and security and other game day expenses will increase as well. So moving to our next fund, Student Activity, or Fund 93. Fund 93 is a fund that we had to establish about maybe two years ago based on changes with the Governmental Accounting Standards. But essentially, Fund 93 really mirrors the activity across all of our school divisions where they have separate bank accounts per school, where they are accounting for activity related to fundraisers and other student clubs dues and activities. We also utilize those accounts to pay for any associated expenses related to student clubs as well. We are projecting for the Fund 93 budget to be a little over $1 million next school year. And just for some added transparency, that number is broken down between student club activities and also faculty accounts, about $959,000. So the majority of it is related to student clubs, and about $47,000 is related to faculty accounts across the school division. So then transitioning to rental income, Fund 65. So this is a fund that we have within the school division, and this accounts for activity associated with rental spaces across the division. So an example of a rental space that we have is at Mallory, for example. We do project rental income for next school year to be a little over $148,000. If you compare that to the current school year, that will be a decrease of about $27,000. But what is driving that decrease is because we are not planning, as far as we know right now, any major renovations above and beyond just routine maintenance and repairs that happen each and every year. And we do utilize the funds within the rental income fund to help pay for the utility costs for these rental spaces and rental facilities as well. So moving on to reimbursable projects, we are continuing to move down that pyramid of our fund structure. Reimbursable projects are Fund 60. This is the fund that we account for any activity that is 100% self-supporting. And also, every single grant that the school division receives, it is accounted for within Fund 60. We are recommending the total budget to be $55 million next school year. And again, if you compare that to the current school year that we're in, that would be a decrease of about $47 million. What is driving that is because we are continuing, as we should, to spend down our federal pandemic grants, and we'll talk about those on the next slide. So the recommendation for a $55 million budget within Fund 60, the basis is always looking at what grants do we currently have within the school division. We expect that those would continue into the next school year and that we would continue to reapply for them. But then we also look at how much funds do we believe will still be remaining at the end of the current school year? And that is because many of our grants will be able to be used beyond just the current school year that we're in, 2023. So we just project how much we'll be able to use in the following school year as well. About 90% of the Fund 60 budget is directly related to federal grants. They are listed on the slide as far as those large amounts that we do get in this area. And more recently, we have been receiving federal pandemic grants, and those are estimated to be about $28 million for next school year. And again, that is because we are steadily spending down those grants as we should before those grants end. This list should look very familiar from some previous presentations that have been done over our pandemic relief grants. But this is really just a reminder for the public on how the division has been utilizing these funds to make sure that we're not only addressing things like air quality, but really looking at the unfinished learning and learning loss within the school division, and also social and emotional learning as well. So this list is a look at some of the major initiatives that we have funded and will continue to fund into next school year. Moving to our last special revenue fund, Food and Nutrition Services, Fund 51. Fund 51 is used to account for the cafeteria operations across the school division. This is separate from our Fund 50, School Operating Fund. And that is because there is an expectation that Fund 51 operates similar to a business, but really, the goal is really just to break even and not make a large profit. We are estimating for next school year for the Fund 51 We are estimating for next school year for the Fund Fifty One budget to be sixteen point one million dollars. Uh that would be an increase of about three point seven million. Um a large part of that increase includes a use of fund balance that we are recommending of one point six million dollars. And that is because we have been um notified by the Virginia Department of Education. To make sure that we spend down our fund balance. Now, that is something that Hampton City Schools, along with approximately uh another one hundred and twenty school divisions across the Commonwealth. Are having to do. And that is because video, we likes to see about three months of operating expenses in the fund balance for our cafeteria services. So those funds are recommended to be utilized in this budget for cafeteria upgrades, so one-time type uses. When looking at our food service budget, when we're looking at our revenues and what our projection will be for next school year. We're looking at how many meals we are serving because that really is truly the basis for um federal grant revenue. Or federal revenue, excuse me, that we do receive in food services. We are planning to continue our community eligibility provision or CEP program. And that is a program that is in all of our schools and allows us to offer not only breakfast, but also breakfast and lunch. At no cost for all students within the school division. So that program will continue for next school year. We are looking at some projected increases in materials and supplies. And that is mostly food costs and non-food supplies that our cafeteria is utilized. And that truly is the result of inflation. For our projected expenditures for next school year for food and nutrition services. Uh we are again recommending a five percent compensation increase for cafeteria staff. And again, no increase to employee healthcare premiums. But then also, because we do have to compete with fast food restaurants and just, you know, other restaurants as well. We wanna make sure that we are continuing to live out our strategic plan. So we are recommending to increase the minimum wage for our cafeteria staff. To fifteen dollars per hour for next school year. Now, we are finally at the, I like to say, the base of that pyramid of our fund structure. We're gonna move to school operating fund, Fund Fifty. This is the last fund for tonight's recommendation, but this is our largest fund that we have within the school division. And this fund truly accounts for things like majority of our classroom teachers, um our principals, assistant principals. Our transportation department utilities, just as an example. So for Fund Fifty, school operating fund, we are projecting a budget of two hundred and sixty-seven million dollars. You can see on the chart, if we look at where we are this year as far as budgeted revenues. We are projecting a decrease of about four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. And I, I hope everyone remembers that because it may come back up in the presentation. The majority of the revenues within Fund Fifty, they are allocated for salaries and benefits. Um that percentage is seventy-seven percent. The remaining twenty-two percent of the Fund Fifty budget goes to non-payroll costs such as contract services. Materials and supplies and capital projects, to name an example. So we're gonna dive into the revenue within Fund Fifty. Next. So within Fund Fifty, sixty-six percent of those revenues or sixty-six percent of that two hundred and sixty-seven million dollars. It is derived from state revenue and state sales tax. Again, this recommendation currently is based on the governor's budget. And will change based on what the final state budget will be, but those changes will be communicated to the school board once known. There are two main drivers of state revenue, the first being the local composite index. So the local composite index, this is a calculation that the state utilizes to determine. How much a city or county can pay for the education costs under the standards of quality or SOQ. The local composite index can be as little as zero percent, which we don't have any divisions that have a zero percent LCI. But it can be as high as eighty percent as well. And you can see that for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, our local composite index is gonna be twenty-seven point thirty-one percent. The other main driver for state revenue is the March thirty-first average daily membership or ADM. And we are projected to see an increase, so this is something that we are very excited about. Um we are looking at a increase from eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy to nineteen thousand thirty-six for next school year. In total, under the governor's budget, Fund Fifty is projected to receive about one hundred and seventy-five point eight million dollars. And that is a slight increase of about three hundred thousand dollars. Then moving to our second largest funding source within Fund Fifty, looking at our local contribution from the city of Hampton. So within the city of Hampton. Funding is actually provided to the school division based on a funding formula that's provides sixty-one point eighty-three percent. Of residential related taxes, so that would be items such as real estate, personal property and utility taxes. Um we work in collaboration with the city of Hampton, so we stay in constant communication through the development of the budget. And we are currently awaiting what our local contribution will be for next school year. But as part of tonight's recommendation, uh we did earmark about eighty-five point five million dollars. And that is the current local contribution that we receive for fiscal year twenty twenty-three that we are in. So once we do receive uh the final number, we will come back to the school board to present that as well. Then looking at our federal and other miscellaneous revenue within Fund Fifty. Federal revenue is projected to be a little over six hundred and eighteen thousand. Um this federal revenue is different from the federal revenue we discussed in Fund Sixty. Because all of the grant-related items are in Fund Sixty. The only revenue from the federal government that we account for in Fund Fifty, it comes from the federal impact aid program. And also the junior reserve officers training court program. Our other miscellaneous revenue is projected to be five point eight million dollars. And I like to say that this is the catch-all bucket, so anything that's not state, federal or um local. Ends up um being categorized as other revenue. Uh the main sources of other revenue are listed on the slide. Um and they include items such as two point five million dollars that we generate at our pharmacy center. Also, one point one million dollars of indirect costs, uh Medicaid reimbursement of almost a million dollars. And then we have some other smaller amounts related to cell towers, print shop, and then the sale of surplus goods as well. So remember, I told everyone to remember a number. So I like to say if we were in a class right now and I was the instructor. I would wanna do a knowledge check just to make sure everyone is attentive, even everyone watching online right now. So my question for my class, I'm gonna pretend I'm a teacher right now. My question for the class is, what was the projected change in the Fund Fifty revenue? Between this current school year and next school year? Now, I'm gonna pretend everyone's hands are up, even if we were on Zoom right now, everyone's hands are up. So I have an awesome class tonight. Yes, so again. We are projecting a four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar eh decrease, excuse me, in Fund Fifty. So I would hope the question that is running through everyone's mind is, alright, if revenue is gonna decrease. Then how can we afford any new spending? So that takes me to our next recommendation within Fund Fifty. So when we developed the budget for twenty twenty-three, and I'm kinda gonna take everyone back to March of last year. We came to the school board and we recommended to utilize about fifteen, a little more than that, a million dollars. For one-time expenditures. And that is because we were looking ahead, not only to the current school year's budget. But we said, alright, what might things look like in twenty twenty-four? And we said, you know what, it could be challenging. So instead of us tying up every single new dollar that we received this school year. And items that will require funding into future years. Let's earmark some funds for one-time needs that the school division still needs to address. But we know that we won't have to fund it each and every year. So the school board approved, and because of that, we are able to recommend budget reductions. Of about fifteen point four million dollars within this budget. Now, what that enables us to do, that enables us to fund new initiatives for next school year. So on this slide, it really breaks out the fifteen point four million dollars. So I'm just gonna go through them because I wanna make sure it is clearly understood. That about fifteen point six million dollars is recommended to be reduced from our non-payroll budget. And that is directly related to one-time expenditures that have been or will be incurred um before the end of this school year. Again, those projects do not require funding in next school year. We also are recommending to subtract out five point six million dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-three one-time compensation. So this, for example, would be the federal pandemic relief bonus that was issued in December. That is not a requirement going into next school year. The next item is a subtraction or a reduction of two million doll, two million dollars, excuse me. As it relates to payroll savings, and we are recommending to utilize those payroll savings from vacancies. To help offset increased substitute costs. And then along with these subtractions, we are recommending to add about seven point eight million dollars. Because we need to make sure that we address any changes in contracts. I've already uh mentioned the substitute costs, but then also other professional services. For example, our K nine search services that we have expanded to all of our schools, elementary, middle and high. So because of those savings, I'm able to also share that we are recommending within Fund Fifty. The same five percent compensation increase with no change to our employee healthcare premiums. And that has a price tag or an investment, I should say, of eight point six million dollars. Um if you look back to fiscal year sixteen seventeen. And if this five percent is approved, that means the minimum wage um increase within Hampton City Schools since that time. Will have been twenty-seven percent. And I think that is something that um definitely pushes our strategic plan forward as we try to attract and retain exceptional staff. Looking at other compensation recommendations, along with that five percent. I've mentioned the one percent bonus for our teachers and staff, that invests about one point four million dollars. Uh we are also recommending some support staff and teacher recruitment incentives for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And this will be, for an example, sign-on bonuses for new teachers. We also are recommending to maintain thirty steps on our teacher scale. Increase the minimum hourly rate within Fund Fifty to twelve dollars and fifty cents. And then also, we are recommending some extra earnings or salary adjustments for, for employees. You will see on the slide that the cost or the impact to the budget is zero. The cost is twenty thousand dollars in total. However, our departments that will be impacted have gone back and looked at their non-payroll budgets. And have identified savings so that the impact to the budget is zero. So moving along to our fringe benefits within Fund Fifty. So not only is it our focus to provide competitive compensation, but also our focus to, is to provide a strong benefits package as well. So for help, help, excuse me, Hampton City Schools. We are self-funded for healthcare. And because of that, um that helps us to maintain and keep our healthcare costs relatively low in comparison to being in the marketplace. And experiencing large profit and gain um swings of volatility. But we are projecting that our medical claims for next school, school year will be um less than what we anticipated. So because of that, we are not needing to increase not only the employer's contribution, but also, as I have stated. The employee's contribution will not increase for twenty twenty-four. Our Virginia retirement system costs are not expected to increase. And also, our contribution to the Hampton Employee Retirement System, or HERS, will not increase as well. Looking at Fund Fifty position changes, the recommended budget does include a net increase or change of, of positions of ten. Um you can see that that is broken out between instructional and non-instructional positions. Um we are looking at a net increase of seventeen instructional positions. Twelve point five of which are new teachers that are proposed for next school year. And then a net decrease of seven non-instructional positions, and those position reductions are of vacant positions. Then moving on to other highlights within the school operating fund, our pharmacy and wellness center. We invest in total three point seven million dollars for that operation, which is a direct benefit to our full-time staff. And then also, for our academies of Hampton, we are investing one point two million dollars. And that is just on the non-payroll um side of the budget. We do continue to make debt service payments of two point nine million dollars um for our pre-K eight schools and also for the Kiketan High Science Wing. And then about six point one million dollars is invested in our Virginia preschool initiative or pre-K program. And we are estimated to have six hundred and fifty-six slots for next school year. And as we are not only planning for this year in twenty twenty-four, we are still looking ahead into twenty twenty-five. So we are recommending in this budget to set aside about eight hundred thousand dollars for one-time expenditures. To help continue to transform our learning spaces for our students. So before I end the presentation, I do like to always provide next steps so everyone knows where we are in the budget process. Again, we are waiting for the release of the general assemblies budget and also our final local contribution. And once received, we will make adjustments that are necessary and present those back publicly to the school board and the community. Then we will have public hearings, one on March eighth and another on March fifteenth, right here at Jones Magnet Middle School at six thirty P M. And then on March twenty-second, the school board is scheduled to vote on the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four recommended budget. So I just would like to give a special thanks to everyone that has been a part of this process. Um I always say, even though I'm the one who was sitting here presenting, this is not a Brittany budget, this is a Hampton City Schools budget. So I just wanna give a special thanks to the division leadership team, the finance department, human resources, food and nutrition services, athletics. Our department heads, our principals, our administrative assistants, our secretaries, everyone is a part of this process. So I just thank everyone for making sure they meet every deadline so that we are ready to go today. And if I could, if I could ask uh my staff to stand, I, I really appreciate them coming out. Dr. Smith and um the school board that does completes tonight's presentation.
And yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for that. You know, one of my favorite pieces of material is this budget at a glance. Because I think it succinctly shows us, you know, what we have, what we're uh anticipating and where we plan to go. I would like to point out that, and I don't know who said it, but somebody said, if you wanna know what's important to somebody, look at where they put their money. And I think based on the presentation tonight. Um our money has definitely been put to a place where we show our investment in human capital. The fact that, um and I'm looking at this budget at a glance, and you did indicate it in your presentation. That since the year sixteen seventeen, um the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year. That we have increased compensation some twenty-seven percent, that is massive. That is impactful and it truly shows that we have a strong investment in human capital. Add to that, the fact that you're recommending, Dr. Smith, through your budget, a five percent increase for all of our employees. Plus, a one-time, a one percent bonus?
Yes, a one percent bonus.
Okay, another check for human capital. And the fact that a lot of times you are here, school boards and other organizations say, we're going to give you this really nice raise. This five percent, but then they end up paying four percent more in health insurance costs. So it ends up only a one percent. And the fact that we are not increasing our healthcare costs at all is just tremendous. And, and really speaks volumes to what we think and how we respect the employees in Hampton City Schools. So with that, I only have two questions, okay, and one kinda speaks to human capital. You mentioned that we, you would be recommending that we increase the food service um workers to fifteen dollars minimum wage, correct?
Correct.
Okay, what is it currently?
Um currently, we are at twelve dollars per hour.
Okay, so, well said, okay. And the second one is um. And the second one is one that speaks to Fund ninety-four athletics. And I, I know Ms. Mayor is here because I hugged her in the hall. But I know you talked about expanding our middle school programs with track in the fall. And you mentioned JV volleyball. When would that be?
Yes, at the high school level, that would be for next school year.
So the JV volleyball would be in high schools? And then the middle school would have the track in the fall?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Questions or comments from other board members? Thank you.
Mr. Chair and Vice Chair, members of the board, that concludes Superintendent Stafford's report. Thank you for doing an exceptional job, as always.
Business, business operations.
Business and operations, and so we'll move right to business and operations. Ms. Branch, I think you have a report for the board for business op, right?
Yes.
Financial report.
Yes, so good evening again. Tonight is my pleasure to present the monthly operating report for January twenty twenty-three. At the end of January, our revenues totaled one hundred and thirty point five million dollars. This was approximately fifteen percent higher when compared to the twenty twenty-two fiscal year. That increase continues to be driven by additional state revenue and state sales tax. And also, there's the difference in when we receive our local governor body's payment, which always will fluctuate just based on our cash flow needs each month. Our cumulative expenditures and encumbrances totaled one hundred and fifty-five point four million dollars. This is seven point one percent higher when compared to last school year. That difference is directly driven by the increased compensation that was approved as part of the twenty twenty-three's budget for this school year. Our March thirty-first average daily membership, our current projection is eighteen thousand nine hundred and eleven. And if that does maintain and is materialized, the School Division could see additional revenue between anywhere from three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars to nine hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. And that range will be dependent upon the final General Assembly's actions as it relates to the correction of the state calculation error that was communicated at the end of January. And as always, you have a report for transfers to and from the Technology Classification for January twenty twenty-three. That completes tonight's report.
Any questions or comments from board members?
Mr. Chair, that concludes Superintendent and Staff Report. Is that right, Ms. Branch?
That is correct.
Okay, that is correct. Thank you. Thanks for doing a great job as well.
Next up is deliberation. And item five point zero one, we've already gone over the, the proposed superintendent's budget. And so then we have item five point zero two, student fees for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Think I forgot about that one. Good evening again. Currently, there are no recommended changes to the student fee schedule. It is attached in the school board's agenda.
Any questions from board members? Ms. Chair, oh, okay, all right. Moving right along to item six on tonight's agenda, six point zero one, Items for Action. Six point zero one, minutes of the public hearing of February the eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. What's the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Woodhouse and seconded by Mr. Samuels that we approve the items for action tonight. Any discussion? Ms. Bowes, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Abstain.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Next, item seven, hearing of any delegations or presentations of any written communications or petitions. Excuse me, Ms. Reeves, will you please read the protocol?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the School Division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk by six forty-five P M on the day of the meeting. Each individual will have three minutes to speak. At the end of your time, you will hear a buzzer. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Comments shall relate to agenda items or matters germane to the business or duties of the school board. Speakers comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and/or defaming the subject of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentations of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully concern, considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves. And first up is Mr. David Dietrich.
Good evening, members of the school board, Superintendent Smith, my name is David Dietrich, one thirty-nine Wilderness Road in Hampton. I'd like to start out by saying, I've been standing before this board for more than a decade now. And I, and I, unfortunately, I still haven't seen addressed the fundamental reason why a school board should exist in any school system. First of all, it saddens me, I, unless I missed it, I haven't heard anything on security in this school system. After the appalling situation that happened in Newport News and on other occasions in, in school systems around the country, I still haven't heard a thing about investing in metal detectors at the door entryways or increased numbers of security officials, SROs, in our school systems. That is a highly, highly significant budgeting item and policy item that a school board should address in any case. Secondly, I still have never heard any discussion in a school board meeting of any excellence, any real excellence in this school system. What I mean by that is, the last meeting I attended, I think it was back in January, the Superintendent, Superintendent Smith said, "Well, we measure our success by meeting standards." Well, is that the objective of this school board, to be, to be average, to just be minimum? Or, or is there, is there something beyond that? I think you can easily measure yourself through excellence in other ways. For example, how do we measure the success of the Phoebus Football Team? Do they, are they an outstanding team because they've gotten together and they've had training? They've gone to all their practices, they've attended all their games? No, of course not. It's because they're an outstanding team. They perform at the highest level, and that makes them one, number one in the state in Division Three A. Why is there no consideration, no interest in that for the school system? According to School Digger, a, an organization that rates schools in, in the state of Virginia, in the twenty-one, twenty-two school season, Virginia's, Hampton City Schools were two nineteen out of three hundred and sixty school divisions. So in the bottom half of the state. Even our top school that I could find for that year was Bethel High School, one eighty-eight out of three hundred and twenty-five high schools in the state. There, there's, there's not, there's, there's gotta be a greater interest in doing better than that. We're, we're fighting towards average or, or minimum, below average. I, I really call on you to do a better job of, of focusing your efforts. Thank you.
Next up, we have Gloria Presley.
I have a question for the superintendent.
Yes, Ms. Chair.
Dr. Smith, did we lose our one hundred percent full accreditation for all of our schools? And did we decrease our dropout rate wherein we are lower than the state? And did we lose the fact that our graduation rate is higher than the state's? Did any of that change? I just need to know.
That has not changed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gloria Presley. I live at Two Fenwick Road, at Fort Monroe, at the Chamberlain.
Ms. Presley?
In Hampton. I'm very, very happy, thank you.
Thank you.
Very happy to be here tonight. Listening to the gentleman just before me, I think I have good news for you. I'd like to say, starting out, that Hampton was one of the few schools in the state of Virginia, and especially the tidewater area, to keep our schools open during the times when, prior to Board of Education, prior to Separate But Equal, prior to massive resistance in the state of Virginia. That is the focus of me being here tonight. I don't know whether we can say the origin of our discontent started prior to all of those kinds of things that were going on politically. But I can tell you that under the leadership of Hunter B. Andrews, the former deceased, now honorable Hunter B. Andrews, and William Mason Cooper, they were the leaders of the school board and their cohorts. They put together a kind of strategy that kept our schools opened while others were being closed all around us. Our parents, the city of Hampton, the state of Virginia, the General Assembly, all of those entities were very proud of the city of Hampton because they made every effort, they utilized every strategy there was to be sure that our students' education was not disrupt, uh, disrupted or delayed or any of those kinds of things to happen to our students. Now I say that to say what my focus is tonight. Those gentlemen and the board made sure that our schools were secured in terms of providing education for our students, which is the purpose of a school division. After having done all of that, all of the strategics that had to be done, all of the kinds of logistics that had to be put in place, now you've got to have people to implement that, right? Because they are the strategists. They are not going to get in the classroom and make the difference. So that's where I come in. There were twenty-six of us. I'm the last one alive. I believe you, at the last meeting, I did give you the brochure that the History Museum of the City of Hampton had invited me to come and speak on that issue. Well, when they called me, I wanted to know, well, where did you get that information? That I'm the last person alive of the twenty-six of us that integrate?
Ms. Presley. Ms. Presley?
Yes.
Unfortunately, time is up. Can, can you give us a quick wrap-up?
Oh, the wrap-up is an assignment.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. I'd like for the board to use all of the entities that I have expressed who are a part of the approval, starting with the city, right straight through to the General Assembly, the State Board of Education for the state of Virginia, Virginia Libraries. I'd like for you to divide yourselves up and do a real study so that these persons, these twenty-seven families, twenty-six families, can receive the kinds of legacy achievements that were done by these teachers and that their families can be recognized with a concrete recognition.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for allowing me to have something extra to say.
Thank you.
I appreciate it very much.
Next, we have Ms. Jerlene, Jerlene Cook.
Oh, I would like to thank the president, our superintendent, for coming into our group of persons who have received the Presidential Citizenship Award for the city of Hampton. I was there when you got yours.
Thank you.
We, we appreciate having you join us.
Good evening, and I certainly do say I'm glad to meet all of you guys, the first time here. But I wanted to say that I'm here on behalf of our school bus drivers' aides. We have no benefits, and I would certainly love to see the board try to get us some benefits. Some of our aides were here years ago or still have some benefits, but not many of them. And I know that some of our aides have left because there were no benefits. And it's a shame that a city as big as Hampton can't get some help for our senior, most of them are senior aides. And I'm fortunate to be honored to be on a bus with our bus driver, Linda Mason-Brook. She's been driving for, what, five, fifty-five years? And so I've got a lot of help there. But we work hard as an aide, and we make sure that the drivers can drive. If they can't drive, if the children aren't behaving themselves. And we do work hard, and we hope that you will consider trying to get us some aides to help us out. We would surely could benefit the insurance and also being able to go to the nice facility you got, medical facility. We aren't even allowed to, to go there. So we would appreciate anything that you can do for us. And I thank you very much for your time. It's so nice to meet all of you.
That, that includes our, our public comment period. Next on the agenda is item number eight, information. Eight point zero one, our next meetings. As was stated earlier, there will be two more public hearings on, excuse me, March the eighth and March the fifteenth, right here at Jones Magnet Middle School, with another meeting to actually vote on the budget. Once again, here at Jones Magnet Middle School on March the twenty-second. Items for information, eight point zero two. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the school board. I'd like to at least once again make our viewing audience aware of the comprehensive safety measures that we have in place in Hampton City Schools. As a matter of fact, most recently, on Channel Three, they aired the proactive measures that we have in place here in Hampton City Schools. Highlighted the K-nine program that we have at all of the levels, high school, middle, and also at the elementary level. And the fact that we do have metal detectors in terms of the new technology at all of our high schools, middle schools, our pre-K through eight schools, and nine of our elementary, and will be receiving, I think, Friday for our other elementary schools. And so very comprehensive, but more than just in- And so very comprehensive, but more than just in terms of the technology, we have a very strong, in this board, you have made an investment in social and emotional learning, uh, prior to the pandemic, and we continue to expand, uh, that particular work and initiative to ensure that we're supporting, um, the mental health of our young people, faculty and staff, uh, and so forth. So I want to just highlight for the viewing audience, um, I know that, uh, our families and, and, uh, received from, a communication from Superintendent's office and certainly from our public relations office, um, all of the measures that we have in place relative to, um, metal detectors, but it's much more than metal detectors. Uh, it is quite comprehensive and the K-nine program that we have in the social emotional learning. So I really want the viewing audience to have accuracy, accurate information in that regard. Finally, I would speak to our ongoing achievement of our young people as demonstrated, not only as, uh, Ms. Cherry said, uh, as measured by the standards of learning, but far beyond that, when we think and put into context that in two thousand and fifteen, we only had five hundred dual enrollment credits that were earned on our high school campuses. Uh, at this particular point, uh, at the, as we concluded last year, uh, we, our young people earned over twenty-five thousand dual enrollment. Those are college credits. So we don't measure it by minimal, those standards, uh, but far beyond that. And so we're grateful for, uh, our young people. And then on-time graduation rate, that moved from, um, eighty-eight percent to now, uh, ninety-seven point six percent. And when you begin to look at all of our student performance groups, um, the significant gains there as well, and our dropout rate is zero point six-two percent. And so again, I think when we look at the achievement, uh, or the achievements of our young people in terms of holistic sense, we don't use the standards of learning, uh, as really our gauge. It is a starting point for us, but our young people, um, have demonstrated, uh, to us over and over again, uh, their strong academic achievement, and we remain proud of our young people. Uh, they're competitive, and, uh, the colleges and the universities and, uh, credentials that they earn, the certifications, uh, and the alike in workforce and military, and all, all of those opportunities afforded to our young people. And so we're proud of, uh, of their accomplishments. And as Superintendent, I will continue to celebrate, um, all of the wonderful things as it relates to our young people and the families that we serve. And, uh, so thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Other information from other board members?
Mr. Chair, I just wanna, um, make a, actually not an announcement, but acknowledge, um, James Harris, Principal of Phoebus High School.
Mm-hmm.
We recently earned his doctoral degree, and so I just want to congratulate him and his phantom staff. They're doing a great job at Phoebus High School.
Ms. Cherry?
No.
Anyone else? I would like to acknowledge our, our academies this week and last week. They actually, um, each academy, what, what do you call it, project-based learning?
Project-based learning.
Yes, yes.
Showcases of success.
Yes, showcases of success with projects-based learning. It was an absolutely amazing demonstration of what's actually going on in the academies. The students did so well. And make sure I'm saying this correctly. The top two winners at the school level will also present and compete at the district-wide level on March the twenty-fifth? Did I remember that correctly? All right, I'm, I'm doing good tonight.
Good memory.
All right, you're doing really good. The presentations were awesome. And so we're expecting to see some great things out of our students on the twenty-fifth as well. And it is a true testament of what's happening within Hampton City Schools and with our academies and the, the solid foundation that the community has helped build as we've transformed teaching and learning within Hampton City Schools. And so I'm looking forward to the twenty-fifth, um, to see, you know, the improvements in the presentations and, and the competition because I know that one freshman academy at Phoebus High School, they're, 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 they're gunning for those seeds. They're coming for them, you know, so they better be ready. But, um, that's all I have. Uh, anything else from other board members? All right, Michaela, anything for my student rep?
No, I would just like to say thank you, everyone, for having me here today. I was a little nervous, not gonna lie. My alarm to take my medicine even went off, so glad you guys could share that with me. Um, hopefully, I can continue to attend and get the hang of thanks. But again, I really appreciate to be able to represent the student body, so thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. With no other business to be brought for, before this board, I declare this meeting adjourned.